Good evening and welcome to the DC 2020 At Large Member of the State Board of Education Debate, presented by the Office of Campaign Finance. My name is Perry Stein and I am the DC Education Reporter at The Washington Post, and I'll be your moderator this evening. Thank you everyone for joining us. We encourage you to submit your questions and participate online using the hashtag #DC20. So that's #DC20. The State Board of Education is a nine-member elected citywide education board. There's one member to represent each of the city's eight wards and a ninth-at-large member that represents the entire city. Because of mayoral control, the board has limited power over education policy. But the members have emerged as important voices representing their constituents in the educational sphere in DC. They have also played key roles in shaping the social studies curriculums and the school report cards, which use a five-star ranking system to rank schools. And as the city's more than 90,000 public school students start an unprecedented school year, these voices are critical. So before we get started, let's hear from the Director of the Office of Campaign Finance, Cecily Collier-Montgomery.
Good evening. Welcome to the first inaugural 2020 DC debates for the At Large Member of the State Board of Education and At Large Member of the Council of the District of Columbia Races. I am Cecily Montgomery, Director of the Office of Campaign Finance. The 2020 DC debates are the inaugural debates under the Fair Elections Program. Started in 2018, the FEP is a voluntary public financing program operated by the Office of Campaign Finance to support candidates for local political office in the District of Columbia. All FEP-supported candidates are required to take part in the debates. It is our hope that these debates, conducted in partnership with Washington Post reporters and moderators Perry Stein and Fenner Naurpil, will help the public to learn more about the candidates, their positions, and policy platforms. We want to take a moment to thank our community partner organizations and the candidates for participating in this process. Thank you for joining us in our mission to help inform DC voters about the Fair Elections Program candidates and their positions. To learn more about the Office of Campaign Finance or the 2020 DC debates, please visit 2020dcdebates.com. The debates will remain on the website through Election Day, November 3, for those who could not watch or listen live. Thank you for your support, and with that, let's meet our candidates.
Great, thank you. And so, the woman who currently holds this seat, Ashley McCauley, she's not running for reelection, so there's no incumbent and it's a wide-open race. So let's meet our six candidates. So we have Dorothy Douglas, who is an A and C Commissioner from Ward 7, Chris Martin, a father who wants to expand access to early childhood education, Troy Murphy, a native Washingtonian, Jacque Patterson, the Chief Community Engagement and Growth Officer at KIP DC, we have Ravi Perry, the Chair of the Department of Political Science at Howard University, and we have Mesiki Valentine, who works with the Fair Budget Coalition and other organizations here in DC. So here are the ground rules for tonight's debate. Candidates will each have 30 seconds for an opening statement, then 15 seconds for a direct answer to a question, and 15 seconds for a rebuttal. Each candidate will also have 30 seconds for closing statements. So let's begin with opening statements, and we'll start with you, Ms. Douglas.
I'm Dr. Douglas, which I live in Ward 7, and I've been an educator for over 40 years in the field of educating our kids, and that's my passion. And I've also been elected as the Ward 7 State Board of Education in 2008. So I'm aware of how the process works and how we know that we're not, we don't have the power, but we're advised and come together collectively to make sure that all the wraparound services and rules and regulations are available for our young kids to have the outcome of the best education that they need.
Thank you so much, Ms. Douglas, and let's move along to Mr. Martin. You have 30 seconds for an opening statement.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. As mentioned, I'm a father of three young children, and I know how hard it is to find affordable quality early childhood education in DC. I think it's urgent that we fund the Birth of Three Act, and I think that I'm the candidate to be able to help support and do that, to drive equity in the city. I focus on revitalizing vacant storefronts and working with communities and key stakeholders to be able to bring jobs and services to communities. I think with the right approach, together, we can make a fundamental shift, a generational shift to DC education. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Murphy?
How you doing? My name is Troy Murphy. I'm a candidate that's running for the At Large Member of the State Board of Education. The reason I'm running is to give a voice to the underappreciated citizens of Washington who haven't had a voice on the board for years. We need representation that represents the average citizen. My main thing that I want to address is early childhood education and making sure that all the citizens of Washington are available.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. And moving along, Mr. Patterson, you have 30 seconds for opening statements.
Sure, thank you, Perry. My name is Jacque Patterson, a proud Ward 8 resident for over 25 years. I'm a father, I'm a husband, have two school-aged children that are in DCPS schools currently, and I also have a daughter who is a teacher in a charter school. And I'm running because I want to elevate the parent voice. Currently, we do not have a parent on the board that is, have school-aged children in the school system, so I'm running to elevate that voice and to provide equity into the system for those schools that have been marginalized historically for some quite time.
Great, thank you so much. And Mr. Perry?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Dr. Ravi Perry. I have the privilege of joining with you today to talk about the issues that matter to everyone, and that is quality education. I'm a lifelong college educator, a proud resident of Ward 7, where I live here in Parkside, and I'm the child and grandchild of educators. And my aunt taught in DC public schools for over 30 years music education. I got into this race because I want to ensure that every student, regardless of where they live, is able to not only achieve their dreams, but do the vocational and tech work or the college work that they want to do after graduating, and go compete and be the best students that they can in the global marketplace.
Great, thank you so much. And Mr. Valentine, your opening statements.
Yes, thank you so much for having me. My name is Mesiki Valentine, and I'm running to be the next At Large Representative to the DC State Board of Education. I'm a native Washingtonian and a graduate of DC Public Schools, and I've been a teacher and a mentor to DC students for over a decade. I'm running because I know that all students in Washington DC deserve fully-funded neighborhood schools, where our tax dollars are actually going where our students are. And in my day job, I work to ensure that our budget is equitable economically and racially. I want to say that I know that DC families deserve a representative that has experience in the classroom and advocate them for our families on the front lawn.
And Mr. Valentine, thank you so much. We're gonna have to move along, and we're gonna start with the first question, and we're gonna start with a show of hands. So by a show of hands, raise your hand, I should say, raise your hand if you agree with the mayoral control of schools. Do you believe that, yes? So we have one hand up?
So can I address the caveat to that?
I have something to say, I have something to reference to that.
I'll get to you guys, I guess, and I will ask you guys this afterwards, but my question is, do you believe in the current governor structure of DC schools, which is that the mayor has power of the school system? So raise your hand if you agree with that.
She has power.
Yes, Ms. Douglas, can you please give me one example in the past year that you feel that the mayoral control of schools has helped students? One example from the past year.
Well, for one thing is that it's already set in place in 2008, earlier than that, because of when they changed the home rule and what the, when they changed the State Board of Education to, from the Board of Education, and that gave her the power to do that, she oversees the money and all that, so she has the, she has that privilege to do that along with Ossie. So Ossie will have to come, come to her, any recommendation that have to come through the mayor, and the mayor had to find out, say so, what's going on, until they change the law back to where it is.
Thank you very much, Ms. Douglas. And Mrs. Douglas, Mr. Valentine, I noticed you did not raise your hand. Give me one example in the past year, a specific example in which you feel that the mayoral control of schools has been detrimental to students. And 15 seconds.
Yeah, I'll give you two quick ones. The mayor forced teachers and parents to protest in the streets to say, "We're not ready to open schools," and very recently put together a hybrid learning plan that did not captivate or include the voices of teachers or parents, nor exposed what the plan for the hybrid learning would be. Both of those have been very detrimental to DC students, and mayoral control should be eliminated.
Mr. Perry, I'm gonna give you that same question. One example where the, you believe the mayoral control of schools has been detrimental to students in the past year?
There are plenty of examples, because the problem is the structure, not what any particular mayor will do with the power. And the problem with the structure is that it gives unilateral control to one individual, and the reason why I think most of us who are running, and particularly me, want to argue for more control of executive decision-making as members of the State Board of Education, is because I believe that it's important that students and parents and community members have a voice along with the elected mayor. And so I think we need to focus on the future, not the past.
And Mr. Patterson, I'll throw you that same question. One example in the past year?
I think overall, we're talking about a vision. I don't think the mayor has really articulated a vision for how she wants education to go, and if you're gonna have mayoral control, you have to have a strong vision to lead the people, and I think we've suffered, because we haven't seen that vision come out there, articulated vision for where we want to take our school system.
Thank you very much, Mr. Patterson, and I am gonna move on to the next question. What is one policy the city could enact, or a current policy that could be amended to help close the achievement gap? And Mr. Martin, I'll have you start us off with this one.
Thank you. The council has already unanimously approved the Birth of Three Act, and the mayor has chosen not to fund the act. I think it's imperative that we fund it immediately, because not only does it support equity for all of our children at birth, so they're prepared for pre-K3, it's proven to be able to provide better health for the students, and better health for their parents, and better health for the communities.
And Mr. Murphy, I'm gonna ask you that same question. Would you like me to repeat?
Yeah, can you repeat the question for me?
Yes, of course. Name one, current, what is one policy that you think the city should enact, or a current policy that should be amended, that you think would help to close the achievement gap in the city?
Well, one of the main things I do want to think that should be amended is the mayor's rule over the education board, because it leaves only one person to make the final decisions for all of the decisions that get made for the city, and I think we should have more options when it comes to these decisions, not just one person make a final decision.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Douglas, what is one policy the city could enact, or a current policy that could be amended to help close the achievement gap?
First of all, it's the parents' priority. So that's what the issues are. They're not coming to the table. And on the title one, that's the number one issue, the title one saying being funded, that the parents must be engaged, which is their priority, in participating and funding, and making sure those parent partners are a part of this discussion, and the progress of our kids are coming to the table, making sure they have the best education. And testing is another thing.
Thank you so much, Ms. Douglas. And Dr. Perry, can I ask you that same question? One policy the city could enact, or a current policy that could be amended to help close the achievement gap?
Well, right now, the way that we teach Black ethnic studies, women's studies, LGBTQ studies, disability studies, is that it's an elective, available to some who want to offer it if the school permits it at the high school level. That's not okay. We need to mandate it. It should be required. We should be ensuring that every student in DC can compete with the world.
Got it. Thank you very much. And I'm gonna start for this one. I'm gonna do another show-of-hands question. Do you believe the city should place a cap on the number of charter schools that should be open? Raise your hand if you believe that the city should place a cap on the number of charter schools that should be open. Okay. Mr. Valentine, why do you believe that the city should place a cap on the number of charters schools that should be open?
Yes, I'm a firm believer that we need to strengthen our public education system. We are seeing chronic underfunding of historical schools in Ward 7 and Ward 8 that are aligned with the star system that we know inherently is racist. And so we need to make sure that we're ensuring that there's equitable funding in our school buildings for all students.
Got it. Thanks. And Mr. Patterson, why do you believe that the city should not enact this cap?
I think we need, we shouldn't do it until we take a needs assessment and also create a comprehensive plan. I think the reason that we have areas of the city that are saturated with schools and then others that do not is because we don't have a comprehensive plan. And until we do that, I think we just need to make a pause, sure that we're putting schools where they need to be, where people have a choice of quality.
And I ask this because, as many of you guys know who have followed education in this city, that with all these new schools that have been opening, we know that it is more expensive to operate smaller schools, so many of our schools do not have enough money. So my follow-up to this question, and I'll throw it to you, Mr. Patterson, to follow up to your answer, is, do you think that the unified per pupil spending is the correct way to go, and how would you sure that there's equitable funding of schools while more schools are still opening?
No, I don't think the way that we're using the formula currently is the right way to go. I think the at-risk percentage is off. I think schools should not be penalized the way like Henley was two years ago when it lost basically a million dollars, basically because they lost enrollment. And Dr. Riggins has a great program over there, and I think what we need to do is look at how we fund schools with a higher percentage of at-risk students and those students that are needing mental health or have suffered trauma. So I believe we need to come up with a different formula of how we fund schools, and it needs to be based on at-risk and needs.
Got it. Thank you so much. And Mr. Valentine, I see you can do a quick rebuttal, and then I'm gonna give this question to Mr. Martin.
Yeah, thank you so much. You know, I think we talk about enrollment without understanding the fact that enrollment is low, is because we are allowing for-profit schools to open up in our communities, and that is taking the enrollment from our traditional schools and thus leading the funding. And so if we want to ensure that there is ultimate school choice, we need to ensure that all schools, neighborhood, public schools, are in walking distance for children and fully funded, and that won't happen if we allow charter schools to continue to pop up.
And Mr. Martin, I'll throw you the same question. Do you think that there should be a cap on the number of charter schools? Why or why not?
I don't, because I believe that parents vote with my schools DC and through the lotteries, and the data are very robust to show how parents choose what schools they choose to send their children to. I think the issue is that we need a baseline funding for all of our schools, so the principals don't have to make the hard decisions of eliminating services and eliminating subjects in order to be able to meet their budget if they're having declining. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. And I'm gonna, Mr. Patterson, did you have a quick rebuttal to what Mr. Valentine said?
Yes, I do, Perry. It's just a fallacy of saying that the District of Columbia has for-profit charter schools, and that's a fallacy, because all, by law, they have to be nonprofits. Whether you agree with them or not, they have to be nonprofits.
Yes, and I will thank you for correcting that. And Mr. Patterson is right, there are no nonprofit charter schools in this city, although some have, are affiliated with for-profit. There are no for-profit charters in this city, though some are nonprofits but are affiliated with for-profits outside of this city, but none in this city. So thank you for that clarification. To move on, the mayor wants to reopen schools on November 9. Do you think they should reopen in a hybrid model? And how would you approach, how would you approach this decision if you were to have a say in it? And I'll start with Ms. Douglas.
First of all, COVID-19, I think we need to have mental health involved, mental education, and also the health services to be involved. We must get the parents involved to make sure that everything is safe, the safety for the children, the teachers, all that's available before. We are making adjustments. This is all the new idea for our kids and what they're exposed to. So you must make sure that everything is in place and all the wraparound services available for our kids to be successful and to learn, and a happy learning place. And right now, we don't have that. We're still having difficulties with the COVID-19, because they don't even know where to begin and how to address those issues. And you have to go through mental health services, and our parents be a part of it, and come to the table, make it safe for our children.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Murphy, I'll throw you that same question. Do you feel the mayor wants schools to reopen on November 9? Do you agree with her?
In some senses I do, but in some senses I don't. I have some transgressions. I have some transgressions against opening immediately. I think we need more research to understand what the parents' needs and the students' needs are at the time. We should make the decision based on what the health experts say, more say than what the mayor decides for the budget. We should just go with the experts, with the health experts decide more say than just what the mayor decides.
Thank you so much. And Dr. Perry, do you believe the mayor is saying we should open schools, we're ready to open schools on November 9th? Do you agree with that?
So, I mean, we're having the same difficulty at Howard right now. Right now, I teach online. We're expected to continue to do so until further notice. And we are following the guidance of DC, and we are still online. So I certainly think going online, going in person at this point is not in the best interest of everyone. I think the issue here is that people are apprehensive, which suggests a lack of trust in the mayor's decision making. And so I would encourage us to be more transparent about how this is happening and what will be the recourse in the event something goes wrong.
Thank you so much, Dr. Perry. Thank you so much. And I'm going to pause this because we do have a question from the community. So let's hear it from right now, Nico Belitsa.
How would you ensure that all DC public schools are fully funded with equal access to education quality in all neighborhoods?
Right. And I know some of you started answering this one, so I'll go with those who haven't. So Dr. Perry, I know we just asked you, but why don't you take, start us off with this question, with this question from Nico?
So I think this is a critical question. So I think I'm one of the only candidates up here that has expertise in policy, which means that I'm the boring guy behind the scenes that can take your ideas and actually write them and get them passed. And that's ultimately what the challenge has been. DC has a wealth of ideas because DC is a brilliant city with brilliant people. But those ideas have been sitting on people's desks, on the table, because folks haven't known how to move the levers of power to get it passed. That's why the equity hasn't happened. And if you vote for me, it just might.
Great. Thank you so much. Mr. Martin, can you answer this question from our community here? The funding, the equitable.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. DC has plenty of funding. DC has plenty of resources. We're not using those resources adequately. So for example, one opportunity could be, we expect everything of our principals to be able to fix everything themselves. Maybe we need more support for the principals and with that, be able to allocate more money to the schools where it's needed most and support the teachers, who in turn can have the biggest impact on the children.
Great. Ms. Douglas, I'll ask you this question as well.
Well, first of all, Title One, it should be chapter one. That's the federal fundings for all our education. And we have the biggest funding and monies that's already available. The mayor gives over $5 million to make sure that we have the proper materials and services for our teachers and our principals to have the quality education and.
Thank you so much, Ms. Douglas. And we're going to move on to Mr. Murphy, the equitable funding of neighborhood schools.
I think we all need to be assured that our neighborhoods will have safe and funded schools. I think the inclusion of more charter schools will take away from the funding from the neighborhood schools. So that's why I'm against more charter schools, because I think it would take away from the public school system.
Okay, so you are also for a cap on charter schools?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much. And moving on to our next question. As you guys know, the State Board of Education was involved in the five-star ranking system. The way it is designed now, do you think it is an effective way to measure schools? And I want to push you guys to really give me specifics in your answers, please. So let's start with Mr. Patterson. Do you believe the five-star ranking system, and to our viewers out there, this uses a bunch of metrics, including test scores and other attendance metrics, to give schools a ranking from one to five stars? So Mr. Patterson, do you agree with this?
I don't agree with it. And I actually have to take responsibility for some of it because I sat on it as a task force. I think we put too much emphasis on the actual test scores, on standardized tests, the percentage, the weight that is given to it to evaluate the schools. I also think that we penalize schools that get low ratings. Basically, we needed that to be an indication of what schools needed more resources. So we need to be looking at how much a student is growing each year. We need to be looking at factors such as how, what's the percentage of at-risk students are in a particular school and how they're moving those children from one place to the next place, their growth each year. So I don't think it's doing a good job.
Got it. Mr. Valentine, I'll throw that question to you.
Yeah, thank you so much. This has been at the forefront of my campaign because I think that it is one of the most toxic and racist systems that DC is using to determine the intellect of our children. No parent decides that their child is a one star. And I would have never sat on any type of advocacy board or any type of task force and advocated for a system as such when we know that data shows the STAR system in South Carolina was used to resegregate and chronically underfund Black and Brown schools. And today, it looks like it is doing the same thing here in Washington, DC.
Got it. Dr. Perry, do you want to answer this question?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the STAR system has too much of a reliance on standardized test scores. I would have never sat on any committee that played a role in that. And frankly, no apology is really acceptable, to be honest, because with the data was clear then that standardized tests are racist, that the outcomes produce racist outcomes that lead to resegregation of schools since 1954. We've been having the same discussion. And I think that the reliance on test scores makes it clear that the STAR rating system has to be reevaluated immediately.
Mr. Murphy?
I definitely disagree with the STAR rating system also. A lot of the issues that they all addressed and brought up about the standardized testing issue, I'm against a lot of the standardized testing being a qualification for anybody to get a rating for their school. And I think more students need to be, have opportunities, and parents need to have more opportunities to know what type of schools they are rated at five stars.
Thank you so much. Mr. Martin, the five-star ranking system.
Right, so I think we all agree that the system is flawed, but you asked specifically for a solution. I think it's all about progress. I want to be on a winning team. I want my kids to be on a winning team. So if we can restructure the rating system to show progress and growth, I think that's going to support our children across the city.
Ms. Douglas?
What's the notion?
Well, I think that we need to look at the testing. Every child should be tested on the same, not some being tested different and some being not tested, like undocumented students, low income and at risk. Everybody should, no matter where they live or where they go to school at, should be all tested on the same testing and be evaluated that way. And that's my understanding, that I would like to support, to see the changes in that. Because to me, the child is being labeled. Because once you label a child, they will always be identified as someone that's a failure. And that's what we're doing.
And I want to let, I note to what Mr. Martin said, Mr. Patterson, yeah, why don't you take a couple seconds, and then we'll go to Dr. Perry.
Just really quickly, I mean, hindsight is 2020 in any particular policy that you do. And I think anyone who has been actually in policy and actually implemented policy, you always want to go back and correct. When someone says that they wouldn't have sat on a board that is actually affecting children, I think that's kind of being disingenuous. We have people who sat on that task force, such as Laura Fuets, who is over the WTU as far as their political aspect. And we all did the best that we can, given the guidelines that we were given at the particular time. And looking back at it, we all have to take responsibility for it at the same time and say, look, we could have done this much better in the design.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Perry. I want to let you, give you a chance.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, no one required standardized tests to be used to apply the ESSA Obama rule. So that's just inaccurate. That's what's convenient. That's what DC chose, one of the few schools, districts of this size who have made that decision, and it was the wrong decision, and people should be apologizing for it. As related to Mr. Murphy's issue on progress and growth, the reason why I disagree with that is because we actually have seen progress and growth. The progress and growth has just been so dismally slow. It's embarrassing. We have an eighth grade.
Dr. Perry, just to, I'm going to, you're above your time, but I do want to, I do want to ask you yes or no. I mean, do you think growth should be a bigger factor in how we assess these? And you guys can all raise your hand. Do you guys, it sounds like you think growth, who thinks growth should be a bigger factor? Is that, okay. So Mr. Patterson? And now, okay, Dr. Perry, no test scores on this one. And Mr. Valentine, I'll give you a quick rebuttal before we move on.
Yeah, I really want to say that I am against standardized testing, and as stated before, I am against the STAR rating system. You know, there are people who talk about being, doing education work for 25 years, but forget to announce that they've been standing on the wrong side of policies. And we can't continue business as usual because we know that there is a subsection of kids, Black, Brown, Latino, undocumented LGBTQ, who are not making the mark. And it is because we are continuing systems that are inherently racist. Standardized testing needs to go, and we need to include quantitative things like class culture, parent engagement, student satisfaction into the factor to help.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Yeah, Mr. Martin?
The one thing that I wanted to add, why I wasn't definitive earlier on the question, mayoral control. I think we have the chicken, sorry, the fox guarding the hen house right now with Aussie. And with the resignation of the state superintendent, this is the time to move Aussie's control away from the mayor, because all the data that we use to make these decisions is controlled by the mayor via Aussie, and Aussie needs to be independent.
Oh, thank you very much. And I guess I will, I'm not going to, yes, Ms. Douglas, and then we'll.
I just wanted to say something in regards to that, too. I just think that the parents, number one priority are the parents. This is what's happening. The parents are not brought to the table when all these decisions are being made. If they engage with their child, because they want their child to learn and strive and be successful. So if you put that, the parents, and part of this, and this is what's being left out, the parents not participating, nor is they coming to the table for any decision making. The decisions are made without them engaging or being involved in the child's progress. That is where we fell in that. So if that was the case, we would know how our monies, because half the time, the monies that comes through Title One, they don't even have an idea.
Thank you so much, Ms. Douglas. And to extrapolate a little bit from what you guys have said through these last few answers, I just want you to raise your hands, and then we're going to move on to the next question. Who here thinks Aussie should be independent from the mayor? And who, so if you believe that it should stay the same, do not raise your hand. But if you believe that it should be independent from the mayor, please raise your hand. This is the Aussie and the superintendent and the mayor currently. So almost, okay. So everyone except Ms. Douglas. Thank you very much. I think that's, and we will move on to the next question. I think, let me go to, does anyone want to, Ms. Douglas, because you didn't raise your hand, I'm sorry, do you want to say why you do not believe Aussie should not be independent from the mayor?
Well, it's already set in place. Like I said earlier in my question, that it's already been set in place. And when we came for the state, for the Board of Education and changed over to the State Board of Education, it's already set in place. You're going to have to go back and go to the city council and change all that. So we have to, what we need to do is make improvement and do more enforcement, and that is what's not happening. And let those parents be engaged.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Ms. Douglas. And Mr. Martin, yes?
Well, Councilmember Shay recognized this as an issue, and she introduced legislation to just, to do just that. I think Superintendent Kang has been remarkable for the city, and now is the time to prevent another mistake of hiring a corrupt chancellor and hiring a competent state superintendent who has independence via the bill that Councilmember Shay has proposed.
Got it. Yes, and we'll go real quick. Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I mean, the State Board of Education is the first elected body that we had under home rule. And I think when you took that voice away from them, that was just detrimental to how we do public education. There are very many nuances that we can do that allows the mayor to still have input, but we need to stop politicizing the Aussie office completely, and allow it to have some independence to make sure it does the will of the people and not be played with politics.
Yes. Mr. Valentine?
Yeah, I think it's important to stress that while we talk about democracy for parents, we also need to talk about how that plays on the State Board of Education. And so it's really important that as we're talking about independency, we need to ensure that there is also independency from big dollars and out-of-state donors in our education system. And that is why we see a lot of politicizing of our education system, because we allow people to run for their seat, take corporate dollars from out-of-state individuals who then try to make political decisions for our children.
Thank you so much. Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Valentine. And our next question is, what voice do you believe is missing from the board, and how would you work to fill it?
I'll take that one.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Douglas. I apologize.
I'm going right back to square one. The parents, the voice of the parents' priority is missing. And what we need to do, come together with Aussie, all local education agency, to come together collectively and also talk about what is needed. They need to be, with the funding, with education, and wraparound services, and also the Health Department, and everything that we need to make our children successful. And that is exactly what's missing.
And we're going to pass this to Mr. Martin. And again, this question is, what would your voice be on the board? And how would it be different from the others? What voice is missing currently on the board? And how would you work to fill that?
We only have one parent with a child in school right now, the nine members. I have two children enrolled at John Eaton Elementary School and another one on their way. We need parent voices on the board.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
I agree. I'm also a parent of a DC public school student. I'm a graduate of DC public schools. We don't have anyone representing DC public residents. We need more representation of average residents that graduated from DC public schools.
Got it. Dr. Perry?
It's a policy board. It's a policy board. So you need someone who's an expert in policy and actually not just talking about and advocating for it, which is critical, but the real step in policy is implementation. And I'm an expert in that. I teach that every day on the Hill. Mepha has head to head the Political Science Department, and I happen to be a student myself, as a student right now in Divinity School. So I know exactly what it means to be a teacher, a student, and administrator, and I can bring all of that to the board.
Mr. Valentine?
Yeah, you know, the board is missing, you know, a native Washingtonian who has understanding of our public school system, not just as a student, but as a teacher, who can empathize with our students, who understands their plight, their trauma, and the systems that have been holding them back for success. And that is what has not been on the State Board of Education, and that is what we need. That is what I bring to the table, transformative, big structural changes that have been left ignored for decades.
And Dr., I'm sorry, Mr. Patterson, yes?
I appreciate that, Perry. But I agree with my other parents, is that we need a parent voice on there who's living this experience every single day with their children. But what makes me also unique is that I'm also a parent of a teacher. So I'm uniquely qualified because I have two children that are in DCPS, a fourth grader and a sixth grader, and I also have an educator who is going through this process of being a teacher, who gives me valuable information every single day of how this goes. And we need to take that to that board and have that there every single time we have discussion or we're talking about.
And I want to push back to Mr. Valentine and Mr. Murphy. You guys both said that you guys are native Washingtonian. Mr. Murphy, you're a parent. We have had those voices on the board. I know we do currently have a native Washingtonian who has graduated. How would your voices be different? And let's start with Mr. Valentine.
Yeah, so I think I bring a very unique experience, being a queer Black male who has grown up in Washington, DC. You know, one thing that I point out often is our LGBT youth, 40%, who are reporting homeless at this time, are a voice that is left out of the table. My work with students has been proactively with the Latinx community, and that is a community I work with today. And so, you know, those extra additional voices, this experience that I have being a native, growing up in DC, going to DC public schools, but also being a teacher in these classrooms. And I think that that is a huge, huge difference in experience.
Thank you so much, Mr. Valentine. Thank you for following up on that. And Mr. Murphy, I'll throw that to you as well.
Yeah, in addition to me also being a DC public school graduate, I also was a former educator in DC public schools. I think we do need more voices to, one of the differences that I would bring is I work[1734.11] that I would bring is I work with DC public schools, I work with DC departments of Health and Youth and Rec Services and then a camp counselor and DC camps. I work with the youth in.
Yeah, Dr. Perry, did you have a follow up to that? Or no?
No.
Nope. Okay. So let me move on to the next question and I'll let you all have a chance to answer this one. Do you believe that the charter board provides rigorous oversight of the city's charter schools? If so, please provide one example in which they have provided strong oversight in the last year. And if not, please give an example where you feel they have fallen short. This is the charter board. So let's start with Ms. Douglas.
Well, let me say about the charter schools, what has happened, when the child, the money's supposed to follow the child, this is what I don't agree with. A child has to go back to the DC public school or some other reason that caused him to go back. The money doesn't follow the students. And that's where I'm not, I'm not satisfied with. And I mean, the board, charter board have to also be able to come together and really follow the rules and guidelines what's already in place now with the State Board of Education. At one time it wasn't. It wasn't following all the rules, but now it has to get collected.
Thank you so much. Mr. Martin, do you believe the charter board has provided enough rigorous oversight? Please provide one example, if you feel so, where it has provided strong oversight and if not, where it has fallen short. And again, I'm asking for specific examples here from you guys.
Absolutely. I think that the charter school board oversight is actually, is extraordinary and that level of transparency that's required for the budgetary and planning purposes is so rigorous, we need the same thing for our DCPS as well, to be able to empower parents to have voices for what programming is working and what programming is not working.
Got it. Thank you very much. Mr. Patterson?
Yes, on this particular issue, I think they have done a great job as far as providing rigorous oversight. And what's really interesting is I had to watch them close National Collegiate Prep in my ward and it was something that was very heartbreaking. But what they did is they held them accountable for what they put actually in their charter. And they actually closed them because they didn't meet the standards they had, they did not meet the standards that they put in their PMF and they were a tier three school and they closed them. So.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. Mr. Murphy?
I do not think the charter school board has made effective oversight over the board because it's been lots of issues that the charter schools have had that I don't think were properly addressed by the board. They've had lots of issues that happened that may have came and were overlooked. And a lot of things that happen in the DC public school system won't go the same way.
Great. And we'll throw this to Dr. Perry.
Schools that receive public dollars should be held accountable to the public and a volunteer unelected board is not held accountable to the public. And so every decision that it makes is problematic because they aren't held accountable to the public, yet they get the benefit from public dollars that takes money away from not only neighborhood schools, but minority neighborhoods in here, East River where I live. That's unacceptable. And it's also, by the way, immoral.
Wonderful. Mr. Valentine?
Yeah, I do not think that the charter school board is by any way transparent. I actually had the privilege of working in a charter school during my earliest years. And I remember parents fighting tooth and nail to ensure that their kids were not kicked out of schools. If we want to ensure that kids aren't kicked out, that schools are not chronically underfunded, we need to totally invest in our public education system and we need to do something about the number of charter schools that are opening up. I just talked to Ward Eight residents who are very worried about the new charter schools that are coming and the enrollment that that will have on Baloo High School. And I think that that is a decision that was made without transparency.
Thank you so much, Mr. Valentine. And we're going to do a quick show of, oh, Mr. Martin, yes?
Oh, to that point then, Mr. Valentine, I agree, but I think we need both. We have a, we have a supply capacity issue in the city. And so we look at, for example, in Shaw, where we have Banneker High School and a middle school that's been closed for over a decade, and the debate about being able to provide additional seats for the neighborhood. This needs to be a comprehensive approach.
Yes, Mr. Valentine?
Two, two things. So I'm happy you brought up Shaw Junior High School because that was the school I graduated from and it closed because there was underfunding. And so, again, as I reiterate myself, the way to ensure that no kid is kicked out of a school and that all kids are receiving adequate funding and resources is to fully invest in our public education system because our charter system has a policy that allows them to knock kids out of their school system. That's unacceptable, Mr. Martin.
Mr. Patterson, yes?
Yes. One stated fact that we have to, because of this narrative about how we say that is all charter schools that are taking funding away from our, by right schools, is that 70% of all residents in the District of Columbia practice some type of choice, whether that's choosing a magnet school that is in the DCPS system or a charter school. So I want to make sure that when we're talking about equity, we're talking about quality schools that parents can choose from to make sure that their child gets the best school that they can possibly get. And a lot of times we just want to make it about charters. Each parent is making a definitive choice on what's the best school for their child. It's not like you're dragging 47% of the people to leave a by right school.
Dr. Perry and Mr. Valentine, you guys want to jump in? We'll start with Dr. Perry here.
Yeah, so choice, the word choice is a political word that's used by conservatives and Republicans. I want to make that very clear, which I am not. While I understand that we need to provide options for parents, let's be very clear that if schools are getting public dollars, they should be held to the same standards as the rest of the neighborhood schools. And as long as that's not happening, it's unfair, it's disequitable, it's immoral, it contributes to the segregation and structural racism that we see already. Period.
Thank you so much. Mr. Valentine?
Yeah, I just want to agree with Mr. Perry that certain people use the word choice in a divisive type of way. But the key here is that if every neighborhood has a fully funded public school, then by right, every child will have the quality education they need. And we won't have to worry about over enrollment in some schools and we won't have to worry about parents having to send their children three or four miles away because there, there's a quality school in a different ward. We need to put them in every ward in every neighborhood, fully invest in them all and make them public and by right.
The funny thing about this, if I may, if I may, the funny thing about this is that we act like this happened in a vacuum. Before 1996, before we had charters, we have to look at what was actually happening in our neighborhood schools when there was no funding going anywhere else but to public schools. There was no type of, as we say, choice, which is supposed to be the conservative and Republican or reform question, is that parents were stuck in schools that were doing a disservice to their children. And that's documented. And so when they had a choice, they picked the school that was best for their children. I think it is immoral. I think it is racist whenever you don't give poor people a choice.
Thank you so much. Mr. Murphy, I saw you wanted to jump in?
Yeah, I did want to agree. When people say choice, the choice is, is the school in your neighborhood is closed and it gets taken over by a charter, the choice is to choose the easiest decision for your child to get an education. If you don't have a choice of a quality public school that's in your neighborhood, you must choose a charter. You have to have more public options.
Yeah, Mr. Martin?
And for those reasons, I'm completely aligned with Mr. Valentine. This is part of the reason why I think we need to fund the Birth to Three Act because in so doing, we empower community schools that every child in the city has a fresh, a bright start in their neighborhood instead of having to go somewhere else. And I think that's really crucial. I agree with him.
And Mr. Valentine, I see you have your hand up, but I do want to ask, but I do want to ask you before you, and you can add this on, you commented on fully funded public schools. And I want to push and clarify, what do you mean by this? Because, you know, as long as I've been covering education and, you know, what the mayor would argue is every year we're, we're increasing education funding, the schools are getting more funding than ever. So what, please expound on what you mean by fully funded public schools and what that would look like and how they should model that.
Yes, I want to add to Mr. Martin's point that I, I agree that birth to three should be fully funded, but we cannot ignore the historical neglects that we are having on children in our school system today and those that have already graduated. And so my platform asks us for an open public education system, zero to 30, because we need to address the problems that we have not been addressing since I was a child. And so now, when I say fully funded schools, I mean, I mean a school that gets the funding that is necessary to meet the need of that child.
Thank you so much, Mr. Valentine. I have to, I have to move this along, but I did just want to note that. Well, thanks. I want to start, Ms. Douglas, did you have anything you want to add before I move along?
Yeah, I just want to say, all schools are funded and go back to Title I and Chapter One fundings. The problem is, is that they're not allocating the money where it needs to be going to. When they, when the neighborhood schools closed them down, this is population because it was, I was alone, this is the reason why they had to go outside the neighborhood to go to other schools. Because my granddaughter had to go all the way up to Columbia Education for five miles for three years. So the problem is that.
Dr. Perry, real quick, yes?
Making equal, equal funding.
Yeah, so as it relates to funding, I mean, the issue here is DC has the money. I study cities for a living every single day. I've written books about them. DC has money that other major cities don't have. The issue is that we get $30,000 per people here. So the challenge here is executing the efficient distribution and equitable distribution in targeted areas. And I have the experience in doing that and convincing people who don't live in those areas about why that's important and why that lifts up the whole city.
Thank you very much. And quick rebuttal, Ms. Douglas?
Well, you know, you talk about all this, no matter what, you have to go through Aussie, you have to follow those guidelines, those rules and those recommendations, then the city council, then to the mayor. So we all need to come together, no matter who, either the parents and the students and be engaged in what's going on, all these changes. So we need to stand up and make sure that our kids are getting the education and the services and the funding that is necessary, even with our children with disability. That is part of the Title I too, under the Education Act.
Thank you so much. And we're going to move on to the next question here. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Patterson, did you have a quick rebuttal there? Did I see there?
We're fine. You can go right ahead, Perry.
You're good? Okay. This year, the DC State Board of Education voted on a resolution to call for the removal of police from schools. Please raise your hand if you were sitting on this board and would have voted on this resolution.
You mean voted in favor?
If you would have voted, I'm sorry, yes. If you would have voted in favor of this resolution to remove police from schools, again, this was a non-binding resolution, but they did pass it, would you have voted in favor of it? Okay, so let's start with Mr. Valentine. Why would you have voted in favor of it?
Yeah, in my 10 plus years of working in classrooms in DC and throughout the East Coast, I've never had a situation where I needed a police officer. And in my day job working with the Fair Budget Coalition, I was able to understand that there was $79 million held up in contracts that could have been used for mental health services to bridge the digital divide, to help parents in other places that is desperately needed. And to talk about this inequitable funding source that we keep bringing up tonight.
Thank you so much. Dr. Perry, why do you support this resolution?
So I know the pain of structural racism all too well. I mean, I was that black boy that was assumed that I needed Ritalin because the school didn't know how to handle me. I was regularly threatened with suspension in the first and second grade. In high school, I was racially profiled by police in my own hometown, in my own block, in my own neighborhood. I was introduced to guns by cops. Data shows that this environment does not facilitate the effective education of young people and that's.
Thank you so much, Dr. Perry. Your 15 seconds is up. And Mr. Patterson, I believe you also raised your hand. Why would you have voted in favor of this?
In essence, Perry, is we have to get to the root cause of what is happening in violence in our schools so that they can move, remove cops. We need violent interruptors. We need health practitioner, mental health practitioners, and we need social workers. We're not addressing the root cause of these issues that happen in schools. I actually have, I live in Ward Eight and have seen responses to crimes that have happened inside of schools, shootings that have happened inside of schools. But I say we need to remove the cops and get to the root cause of what's happening in our schools and the relationships. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Murphy, why would you have not voted for this?
As a former graduate of a DC public schools, I went to DC public schools and know that all the time that security isn't always equipped to deal with all the issues that may happen inside of school. There's lots of things that go on that may need the hand and assistance of actual police. And if the police is equipped with well versed in dealing with students, that can help build this relationship between the students and the.
Thank you so much, Mr. Murphy. I'm sorry, I got to keep you on time here. Mr. Martin, why would you have not voted, why would you have voted against this resolution?
I think there's a difference between policing and profiling. And I think there's a difference between safety. I was in Connecticut in 2014 and saw the hearse's go by from the Sandy Hook shooting. That shook me to the core. Our teachers are scared of that type of violence. And I think that we need to protect our children and our teachers. Very different than actively policing and harassing our people.
Yeah, Ms. Douglas?
Well, I just want to say, I think you need the security in school, no matter what. That's what the teachers are there to teach our children and whatnot. But we also need to look at the safety that's going to save our kids. Because sometimes we don't have the safety net in place to protect our children. We need to also look at that, even the parents and the kids' safety and the parents' safety.
Thank you so much. And I saw, Dr. Perry, you have a rebuttal to this. Yes?
Yeah, I want to make a rebuttal. Saying I will support this non-binding resolution does not mean that I support, you know, having unsafe schools. Make that very clear. I think that we need to restructure the system so that we are catering more toward mental health services. We should be following the guidelines of social workers that determine the number that we need per school. And if we focus on those variables, then we will be able to decrease the kinds of crime and negative activity that does happen in schools. And that's something that allows.
I'm sorry, Dr. Perry, I'm going to have to cut you off. Mr. Valentine, yes?
Yeah, I just want to address Mr. Martin that in this climate, there cannot seem to be a separation of policing and profiling. Data shows that over 90% of students in Washington DC who are arrested in schools are black and brown. And so we can't continue this system that we know is removing kids out of our school buildings. And then the community themselves criminalize kids when they're out on the streets. But the police have put them out there and then, and then are locking them up and putting them in jails. It's a no-go. It's a waste of money. $79 million could have gone to other places and I would have voted to do just that.
And let me, let me ask you guys.
So Mr., Mr. Valentine, I agree with your statement. The question was, would you have supported the resolution? And I don't think the resolution was properly thought through. So I agree with you in terms of the funding and the approach. I just don't think, I think it was rushed and it wasn't properly thought through.
So you, so you agree the continuation of keeping cops in black and brown schools was appropriate because what was on the table was a yes or no. So sitting on this position, you would have had to answer yes or no. And so you're telling me that you would have continued the policing, the overpolicing of black and brown students, knowing that 90% of them that are arrested are black and brown?
No, I'm saying the opposite. I'm saying that I think that the board did a poor job framing the issue and framing a response. And by making it binary like that, that was a failure. And my hope is that the board can do a better job working together towards more reasonable solutions that address equity and address these concerns.
But the original question was, would you support the resolution? And so, again, I would not support any resolution that continues the overpolicing of black and brown students in Washington DC.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Valentine, Dr. Perry, Mr. Patterson, if, and this is opened up to everyone, what would happen as, you know, you guys are on this board and you have principals that say, hey, we want this, we need police in schools, we need these SRO, these school resources officers. But then you have parents and community members saying, you know, we don't want that. It leads to overpolicing. How do you find that balance? And I think this question is one, because this is what we saw. We did see principals say, we want to continue having SRO in our schools. So let me ask you this, Dr. Perry, how would you balance those two kind of viewpoints? You have these people in schools, principals who say they want this, and then you have parents and others and community members that say, hey, this leads to overpolicing.
So as a black gay man who lives with HIV every day, I have been on both sides of police. I have been attacked by them. I've had them help me at gunpoint. And I've also trained officers in three different cities around the country. I understand this is a pickle of an issue. And in fact, what the data shows is that policing in schools, I hate the term, but the fact is, security in schools does improve actual overall outcomes in those very disenfranchised, targeted neighborhoods that are also hurt by those.
Thank you so much, Dr. Perry. I got to, got to move you along. Mr. Patterson, yes. And I know, yes, why don't you take this? Because I know you work with the Charter Network.
She speaks succinctly for this. I have a great friend, Dr., I mean, Dr. Riggins at Henley. School shot up last year. You covered some of the stories and everything. And she says, I do need this, to speak to your question. I do need police officers, SROs in my building, whereas you have parents who are saying, we want them out at the same time. So how do you address this? Again, I point to the root cause. We have to get violent interruptors in there that are working out relationships that spill out inside of classrooms or spill out right outside of the school. We have to get to the root cause, whether that's more mental health practitioners in each one of our schools, specifically those schools that have at risk, and social workers. The answer is not more cops. It's more getting to the root.
Got it. Thank you so much. And we're going to, we actually got a good question in from the community, so I want to throw that one at you. I know a few of you, for the candidates that say that they are against standardized testing, will you push for the city to refuse federal funding that is tied to such testing? Or do you have a different solution? And I know, I'm going to start with Mr. Valentine, because I know he spoke very strongly about being. I'm going to start with Mr. Valentine, because I know he spoke very strongly about being anti-testing, and then I'll open it up.
Yeah, so I would honestly want to do more research to see how much federal money is tied to standardized testing. I know for a fact that it has to be done away with. Now, if this is something that the city is refusing to do, my next best effort would be to decouple standardized testing with things that are like the graduation requirement, things like funding, things like teacher evaluation. So that way they are not so dependent on how we treat our teachers and our students inside the school building. But hands down, I am against standardized testing.
Thank you so much, Mr. Valentine. Ms. Douglas, for candidates that are against standardized testing, and you can speak to your position on standardized testing then, if you are against it, will you push for the city to refuse federal funding that is tied to such testing, or do you have a different solution?
Well, you're going to need to test it because that's how you're going to identify the students that are here that's having concerns that need to be addressed. And this is how they identify our kids that are being tested and the fundings that come about for our students. So that's, this is how we identify our students and making sure that those funds are being allocated in the proper amounts and who gets the amount of money that they need to be successful.
Thank you so much, Ms. Douglas. And Mr. Patterson, I see your hand up there.
Yes, I had a great time talking to my daughter about this, who is an educator this morning. It's very subject. And it's the type of standardized testing that you're having and what is measuring. I would do away with PARC. I don't think PARC works for our city, and other jurisdictions has proven that. And I would go to something more like MAP, which measures growth.
Got it. Thank you so much. Dr. Perry, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, so PARC does need to go. Everyone else has already dropped it. But again, this growth measure is not the way to go either. We have grown. The mayor can brag about the numbers haven't gone up. Yeah, they've gone up on a scale of 500 from like 235 to 250 over 20 years. Is that okay? Is 25% proficiency in eighth grade and fourth grade reading of a majority black school district okay? No, that cannot be okay. So growth cannot be the solution only either.
I thank you guys. And moving on to, actually, Mr. Murphy, do you want to answer this question about testing?
I would push for not accepting funding that was tied to standardized testing because the reason that people, you can't judge every student on a standardized test. There's no one test that would be able to accurately give you an assessment of all the students. So if the funding was tied to it, then you automatically marginalize a lot of the students that aren't equipped to pass the standardized test. We have a lot of other ways to fund this, this, the city school system.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
I want to echo what Mr. Murphy just said. I have twins, and one of them is very good at tests, and one of them is very poor at tests. And yet, when we do informal assessments on a monthly basis with their teachers, they're both at the same pace. And I think that real-time feedback is crucial for the teacher to be able to have an individual plan for each student to be able to meet success, coupled with less robust testing.
Thank you so much. And I want to, a few of you guys, sorry, Ms. Douglas, yeah.
I just want to say, as you know, our school, D.C., is most poorly, performance of our kids not being, in their performance. So if we're not teaching our kids with the right tools, whether testing or not, then they're having problems anyhow. So that's where we need to make sure that they're getting the service that they're supposed to have. So we're number one in the United States that has really failed because our grades and being in the map because of performance.
Thank you. And Mr. Valentine, yes?
Yeah, I just want to stress that we all know that kids are doing really great on standardized testing and still leaving high school unprepared, not knowing how to type, not understanding what credit is, not ready for society. And so a good chance that we have now is to really re-innureate our D.C. Public Schools with life skills curriculum. It's been a part of my platform. It will attract parents to bring their students back to DCPAS. And regardless if they choose college, vacation, or a career afterwards, they will be ready for life.
Thank you so much, Mr. Valentine. A few of you, a few of you guys have, I've heard you've mentioned attendance. So I'm curious, do you believe that we should keep with in-seat attendance as a metric to determine if kids can pass their courses? Is in-seat attendance the way we should go? And if not, do you have another way to measure this? And why don't we, let's start with a show of hands. If you believe that in-seat attendance, this is currently what we use, which is to take attendance every day, and kids are, their grades are penalized if they're not there enough times during a quarter, if you believe that this is the right way to go, please raise your hand. And for all six of you who did not raise your hand, I'd like to hear what you think is the best way we should do this, and how do we hold kids accountable if we're not taking attendance? Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I think what we're finding out through this COVID is that a kid does not have to actually be in a seat actually to be learning. There's other ways that you can measure what they're learning, and it doesn't have to be actually in a seat on a regular basis. We're using things like Canvas right now to make sure that they're actually doing their assignments on a regular basis. I have my kids that are doing that, although they use it for attendance, but what's being really measured are they doing their assignments on a regular basis and those assignments being graded. So there's other ways that we can do it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Patterson. Mr. Murphy?
Also, yeah, I don't agree that every student has a unique circumstance that might, you know, prevent them from being available to go to school every day. So if we had a more comprehensive way of understanding whether they were comprehending the knowledge that they were being taught, that that would be a better way of understanding whether they should graduate rather than just attendance.
So Amor, you want more comprehensive way to understand rather than just measuring attendance. So moving on, Mr. Martin, do you agree with in-seat attendance? You said you didn't. So what is the better?
I think it's actually, I think, I think I actually want to spin that on its head. We have these huge facilities that are only used for 180 days a year, and there are so many other ways that our children can learn and engage, whether it's outdoors, whether it's through athletics. And I think it's important that we really look at the whole picture of the education spectrum and not just in-seat attendance.
Okay, yes. Did I ask Mr. Valentine, do you want to take this one?
Yeah, in my years of teaching, I've met many students who never needed to be in my seat but was able to do work at home. And I agree with some of my other candidates that we're at a crucial time with COVID to understand that not all kids need to be seated in a seat to understand. My platform has been on opening different pathways to show mastery for kids, and we understand that kids learn differently.
Dr. Perry?
So I've taught my whole life, and I've never taken attendance. Now, I teach at the college level. But what that says, though, is right, is the human brain is capable, even at the ages of children. We know this from child psychologists, that they, in fact, are measuring their learning not by attendance. In other words, attendance does not predict learning outcomes. What predicts learning outcomes is experiential learning, hybrid learning, outdoor opportunities, exposure to learning about your own self, and that improves your likelihood of being successful.
Thank you so much, Mr. Patterson.
I believe you led with me, so I've answered.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry about that. Ms. Douglas?
Yes, I think attendance shouldn't be a priority for our kids to be in school. But I think that we need to have with the Title I funding, as a parent partners that have parents involved, as an education aid in the classroom, to help those kids that have difficulties that come to school that are late. So that way you can always have after-school work to give them. You've got tutorial programs that we need to put back in place to help our kids that are having difficulties when they're not present. Because there are all kinds of reasons for them not to be present, to attend school due to the fact...
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. And we have another good question from our viewers right now. So the State Board of Education currently has an advisory committee on social studies state standards that is working on recommendations to revise the standards. From your role as a state board member, how can you address, how can you address the marginalization of social studies through the standards review process or otherwise? And I know a few of you have touched a bit on this, but let's go at it again. Dr. Perry?
Curriculum is the number one way that I am proposing, and the only candidate proposing it this way, we're going to solve equity. We know from data that has proven for the last decade where it's happened, and right now, state requirement in Oregon and California, New Jersey, where students learn black studies, ethnic studies, LGBTQ studies, that they therefore are in fact able to perform better and graduate all the time.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Mr. Valentine?
Yeah, Mr. Perry isn't the only one who thinks we need to diversify our curriculum. It's something that I've been fighting for. And I'll go even further to say that we need to give our students the opportunity to learn globally. It's good to learn about black history here in the United States of America and our accomplishments as black African Americans, but we also need to learn about the root, the root of where we come from, heritage, Afrocentric. And those things need to be inundated in our school system to make kids want to have fun and learn things about their history that they've never learned before and give them courage and self-confidence in themselves. So I agree with Mr. Perry, but he's not the only one.
Dr. Perry, I know he's got something else to say. Dr. Perry, yes?
Yes, I just want to ask, I mean, are you, Mr. Valentine, saying that you do and support what I've been saying from day one, a required, integrated, throughout every grade level, mandated black and ethnic study curriculum? Is that what you're saying? Because that's what I believe should be happening.
I am saying that, yes, we do need to move in a direction where our curriculum is much more diversified, but I do not want to leave out the voices of parents. And I think that in our system, as people who are running for this position, we need to make sure that parents are comfortable with their kid, with what is being taught in their classrooms, and it is aligned with what they want their students to know when they leave the school system.
We agree on that.
Mr. Patterson, yes?
I think they have very valid points, but I disagree with Dr. Perry that we can magically make equity happen just because we changed the curriculum. There are a plethora of things that go into to make sure that we stamp out structural and systemic racism. So I disagree with him on that aspect, that there's so much more that has to go into this besides, for equity, besides just changing the curriculum.
Ms. Douglas, on the social studies curriculum?
You're talking to me?
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Douglas, yes. Yes. From your role as a state board member, how can you address the marginalization of social studies through the standards review process or otherwise?
Well, what I would like to see more involvement is the parents to be involved, the engagement of parents be a part of all our kids' social gathering, and also to be involved with what they need to learn the culture. So if a child's more exposed to a lot, they're learning a lot. You have some learn slow and some learn medium faster than others. So they have all the certain...
Ms. Douglas, sorry, you are over time. Dr. Perry, yes?
Yeah, I was wondering about there for a second. Right now, the effort is ongoing right now to get parent feedback on these revisions of standards that hasn't happened in over 15 years. And so I think we all should be encouraging every parent to fill out the survey now that's been distributed on social media so that we can get parent feedback on teaching the curriculum that will advance their student and make sure that they're able to compete with the rest of the world.
Thank you so much, Mr. Martin.
So to amplify that discussion, I do believe that there needs to be more tangible components to the curriculum. So for example, being able to utilize our amazing museum network and field trips, to be able to touch and feel and learn about the rich history of some of the members of our city and the contributions they've made. For example, you know, Dr. Drew at Dunbar High and his remarkable innovations for plasma during World War II. That's inspirational. And the more we can involve students in real stories and see the impact of our culture.
And Mr. Murphy? And then we're going to go to the next question. Mr. Murphy?
I do agree that curriculums should be revised. Curriculums are something like the students are always evolving. We should always be able to revise and re-circumstance the curriculums to match the current climate of the society and the students that need that curriculum.
Great, thank you so much. And as you guys know, if you've been following the state board, they have done a lot of work on teacher retention and reports. So D.C. has a turnover over the past decade of 15 to 22%, which is higher than the national average compared to urban school districts. How could you, how do you believe the district could improve teacher retention? And this is a question from one of our community members here. So how can the district improve teacher retention? Mr. Martin, yes?
So that report resulted in exit surveys of 6,800 teachers, I believe. And of that, 58% said it was the school culture and lack of support from administration. As I mentioned earlier in the discussion, I think that we have thrown the kitchen sink at our principals, and we haven't given them the resources to be able to support the teachers. So one of the first steps I would take is be able to support our teachers by being able to add more bench strength to the principal staff and the administration staff.
Good. Thanks. Mr. Valentine?
Yeah, you know, one of my platform policies is to make sure that we're building a system that keeps and grows good teachers. And I want to ensure that D.C. is providing teachers with a contract that is longer than one year, with pay that ensures economic stability, with protections. I know that all teachers in D.C. are not union-protected, and we need to make sure that that is the case. But finally, and most importantly, we need to do a way with the impact evaluation system.
Mr. Valentine, thank you so much. I'm going to move to Mr. Murphy. How can we improve teacher retention here?
I want to agree with him when he was saying that we need to extend the contracts and also offer better benefits and better pensions to teachers. And like you say, get more union-represented teachers so they can all, you know, be on the same page when it comes to issues that teachers face.
Got it. Dr. Perry?
Again, districts that have implemented black, ethnic, LST studies have had a lower turnover rate. Secondly, I support de-escalation and peer mediation training being made part of a teacher certification. I think impact needs to be divorced from the test scores. And so one way to eliminate this from happening again is to get back to the question of divorcing ourselves from PARC and from standardized test scores, which are also attached to teacher retention, which is using an unfair system to then judge teachers harshly for doing the best that they can under less than ideal circumstances.
Mr. Patterson, yeah. And Mr. Patterson, you work at a charter schools that do not, and just so our viewers know, charter schools do not use impact, and they do also have teacher retention issues as well. So, but yes, Mr. Patterson?
And you're correct, Perry. And since the other candidates have already touched on a number of things, I'll touch on one thing that impacts a lot of the teachers that has not been hit on, and it's the affordability of housing that is in this area. I'm one of the believers, having been a military person, as you can see from behind me, that every military person receives a stipend, a housing allowance. I believe teachers should receive that same thing. We have the highest cost of living almost in the nation to live here, and it's very affordable for parents to, I mean, for teachers to live in this area. So I believe that we need to provide that for them.
And I'm going to throw it to Ms. Douglas. How can we improve teacher retention?
First of all, you've got good qualified teachers, and the teachers union has been involved and been supportive of these teachers. The main thing is making sure that they're getting the service that they're supposed to have and be successful to teach our children what they need to learn. So after five years, that they're gone and the kids are left behind and going on to another teacher that was really supportive of them and they understood and was passionate about. So we need to keep our teachers that are here and stop just not to the neighborhood, but also qualified teachers all around.
Thank you very much. And I think we have time for one more question here. And I'm going to ask another accountability question. And the reason why I'm asking this is obviously, you guys, you know, are another branch. I know you have different powers than other than, but you have voices in this. So I asked about the charter board. Now I'm going to ask, do you believe the D.C. Council has provided rigorous oversight of the city's schools? And why don't I ask you guys to raise your hand if you believe the D.C. Council has done a rigorous job in providing oversight to D.C. schools? Okay, so now what I am going to ask each of you is please provide an example where you would have, where you feel that the D.C. Council fell short, and tell me how you would have spoken up in your role, how you would have used this voice that you have from the state board. So again, I'm going to ask for a specific example in the last year where you feel the D.C. Council fell short, and how you would have used your voice to speak up against that. And I'm sorry, I will start with Mr. Valentine here.
Yes, I want to bring up something very recent. On Friday, the council was holding a hearing on distance learning at 9:00 a.m. And I think that this is a prime example of not uplifting parent and teacher voice. There's no way possible parents or teachers will be able to testify at that hearing and provide critical feedback on the system that has been flawed, has not been checked, and has not been checked on and verified by the parents. And so I think that the council does a piss-poor job, excuse the language, but a piss-poor job at making sure that parents are at the table at the mounted time at the mounted time that they need to be. And this Friday is an excellent example.
Mr. Murphy, I'll throw this to you. And if you can, I know it's short, but how you would have used your voice to, to correct where you feel that the council fell?
I feel like the council needs to do a better job of assisting the mayor and make decisions in reference to this pandemic. A lot of parents are at odds with the board and the mayor's decisions about opening a school so soon. And I think if they would have a better opportunity to be able to speak on how they feel, then that would give the council and the mayor a better opportunity to represent them.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Martin.
I think the council needs to have more, more oversight over, over the mayor. For example, when the chancellor failed a federal inspection test and, and had a choice to rectify the issue or forego head start money, he forego, forewent the head start money. It's 125 teachers worth of funding that we lost that the council should have held the mayor and the chancellor accountable for.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas.
Well, I'm a page, current, and also a board member page. We have already went to the city council and testified saying the things that are needed. Because of help and all the divorce of the parents, the priority of the parents, this is how we can make a change and stand up and get the things that we are entitled to without going through a page as parents and offering to the mayor.
Thank you so much, Dr. Perry.
I agree with Mr. Martin that getting rid of head start was unconscionable. It's immoral. Can't believe we did that. That's just such a shame. We should be embarrassed. Secondly, you know, the mayor and city council was taking a victory lap when the new state nation's report card data came out last October. And they were taking a victory lap because in 1998, 236 was our score on terms of eighth grade reading levels on a scale of 500, by the way. 236 was our score in 98.
Thank you so much. Mr. Patterson on the D.C. council?
Yes, you can see where we are right now. They had the opportunity to put $11 million in distance learning, and they did it. And what do we have? We have students that they, we have 20% of students that they don't even have taken accountable for. And no one's holding anyone, DCPS or anybody, accountable for those students that are missing and have been gone since COVID hit in March. So that's a piss-poor job, to use Mr. Valentine's term, of oversight to make sure that we're prepared for distance learning for COVID and to address COVID as it is right now when we went back to school. So we could have done a much better job. They had, they could have provided much better oversight.
Thank you so much. Mr. Murphy?
I already spoke on it.
Does anyone here have a, does anyone here have a rebuttal? No? Okay.
I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's a rebuttal, but I do think it's really important as candidates for this, for this seat that we acknowledge that it's crucial for the state board to be able to work well with council to be able to, to collectively increase the performance and opportunities for all of our students.
Well, thank you, everyone. And so we have come, yeah, we have come to the conclusion of tonight's debate. I think we covered a lot of ground here. And before we go, we want to offer each of you opportunity to make a 30-second closing statement. So let's start with you, Ms. Douglas. You have a 30 seconds for a closing statement here. And I'll, yeah.
Well, I'm running for, I'm running for the state board of education. I have 40 years' experience in education, and I'm passionate and caring about our children, making sure that the priority of our parents and our kids are being served and getting the best education that there is in the District of Columbia, in statewide, global wide. And also, I'm also a parent too, and a grandparent and foster parent. So I am also a public school person that I graduated from, D.C. Public Schools. So my, my concern is that I want to continue to be helping our kids, our parents.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Ms. Douglas. Sorry, guys, I got to cut you off at 30 seconds. Mr. Martin, you have 30 seconds.
I'm a father. I am a collaborator. I'm a problem solver. And I think we need all three of those skill sets on state board of education so that we can focus on our children and collectively make this city a better place for all of them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Murphy, 30 seconds.
The one of the reasons I'm running for this position is I want to speak for the unspoken, for citizens of Washington that's been marginalized for so long. I'm not accepting campaign funds because I feel like if you really want to support me, the way you can do it is by voting for me. I feel like people who take money for these positions have to answer to the people who donate their money. So if you want someone who can come in here with a clean slate and change the way that the system been run, we need to have new representation on the board.
Thank you. Mr. Patterson, 30 seconds.
47% of parents have their children in charter schools. 53% have them in DCPS. I'm the only candidate that is a parent of, of kids that are on both sides of that fence. And we need someone who will represent all of our students, all of our parents, regardless of where they choose to attend school on a regular basis or where that parent puts their, I am that candidate that can represent all of our parents and all of our students.
Thank you. Dr. Perry?
I believe that every D.C. student matters. I'm a lifelong educator, child, grandchild educator. I taught in D.C. public schools for decades. I am someone who is a policy expert. And so I know not only how to bring good ideas to fruition, but to make sure that they get passed and budgeted and implemented, and you see the change in your child's life. I invite you to join me at ravi perry for D.C. com so we can together make this district a state and make the state the number one education state in the country.
Wonderful. Mr. Valentine?
Yeah, so I would like to start by saying that I'm the only candidate here that has committed to the fair elections program. And since day one, I've been committed to big structural changes that will bring an end to the educational inequities and bring more opportunities to our students. The state board of education needs somebody with bold vision, someone that is not shackled to their employer or charter network corporations. And it is very important that we usher in a school system that is by right, fully funded, and public for all D.C. children if we want to tackle the problems that we face before us. So please visit me at www.vallentinefordc.com.
Thank you so much, Mr. Valentine. And that concludes our debate. To learn more about how to vote in this election, visit the dcboe.org. And remember to visit 2020dcedebates.com to watch this debate and all the others this week in their entirety. Thank you so much to all our candidates, community partners, and the Office of Campaign Finance for hosting tonight's debate. Good night and go out and vote.